It will take about three minutes if you'll just bear us a little bit, we'll do that real quick and get back in and get started. Thank you.
Come on, man. Fifteen minutes late already. The Bears are playing on TV tonight. Let's go photo bomb them. Well.
I'm gonna go out here and take their picture.
Photo bomb them.
Ah, yeah.
And then I guess the one before I wrote about my, our actual trip to Montana where my truck overheated. So, we're always having misadventures. I wrote one, we went camping, there's a real pretty camping place on the other side of Turkey Lake, near Jefferson City. It's right, it's near the bend. And we had this campus spot, it was amazing. It's just a, facing the lake, beautiful view, no obstructions, a little grass lawn that goes down to the lake, and the lake's perfect. In the middle of the lake, we got floats and we floated around. But, uh, I hadn't, it was, the camper was new and I hadn't figured out, uh, the deodorant on the toilet. So, the first time someone used the toilet, it was like, oh. So we're like, we're on YouTube, how to solve the stench in the toilet, in the, in the second system. And it was very simple, yeah, lemon scented pine salve, pine salve, lysol, the, the cleaner. Lemon scented cleaner, and poured in there, and it's. But I think people thought that was pretty funny, how stupid I am. I was, I was kinda right about how stupid I am and I do stupid things, getting into misadventures.
Yeah, I wouldn't have known about that either, and it wouldn't have been me, because I was born with a sense of smell. So, yeah, my husband takes advantage of that.
Oh, I was going live when I was telling that. I forget this is live and I'm like. Okay. And I don't have to write these, so I can just, as soon as they're done, I'm going.
All right, come on. Patient, let me call our meeting to order. This is the Hawkins County College of Education, September the fifth, at six, a little bit after six o'clock. All members being present, for, for, if I could ask you please, to stand from all the silence and. Uh, Ms. Credit said if we could remember Ms. Carolyn Givens, a teacher at Volunteer who passed away this week, in your prayers, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you, if I could ask, Mr. Hickson, be reader conflict of interest, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, do you acknowledge that you have a personal and or indirect conflict of interest? Do you acknowledge any conflict of interest for all actions and purposes of this meeting? And do you further acknowledge that all your votes will be in the best interest of the school system?
I agree with that.
As the record reflect, it all have on both conflicts.
Thank you, sir. Item number four, number five on your agenda is approval of minutes from the special call board meeting on July the twenty ninth, and also the August first, two thousand nineteen board meeting, which have been sent to board members either in hard copy or digitally. Do I have your motion to approve? Thank you, Ms. Credit, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms., uh.
Yeah, Charles.
Thank you, Charles. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the special call board meeting and also the August first board meeting, let me know by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign, hearing none, the motion carries, thank you. Um, six on your agenda is approval for our outline and the format of the agenda, is there any motions to modify the agenda or the outline?
Um, Mr. Larkins, I would like to say that if you've noticed, I'm sure you have, I did move the election of the officers to the end of the agenda for two reasons. Number one, it moves up the items, we may have guests here to observe, uh, for example, student recognition or new, or our new students, board members introductions. And, uh, number two, if a new board member is elected to president without experience or limited experience, it prevents him from having to run the first board meetings for the moment, at that point in time of the meeting. So, uh, however, I would entertain an idea that if you want to move it back up to the front, I would, uh, support that and then support that I do so, then it's okay.
Um, the floor is open for any comments or recommendations to change it to the beginning. I know historically, the seven years I've been on here, we've done it at the beginning, and I've been in that position where I received a gavel without having a lot of advance notice of the meeting. I would prefer to have it at the end, so I'm not opposed to it being at the end unless there's somebody else that's opposed to us doing it at the end. Hearing none?
Well, I've got a question. If that's the case, then when will the newly elected one get that experience? To run board meetings?
The minute the board is, the minute the board is.
Well, there won't be another meeting locked over.
Correct.
So it won't matter, I mean, if, they won't have any more experience, the first to lock over, they will now.
Well, he'll be communicating with the director one-on-one during the whole thirty days up to the next board meeting, and as chair.
Still won't give him free to run a meeting.
Not, not running a meeting, but he can give a little bit.
And that's all the chairman's supposed to do, is run a meeting.
Right. And, and also prepare the agenda.
Assist.
The director and the chair does that. So if there's no opposition to it, we'll leave it at this and have an election at the end, thank you for that. Uh, at this time, we will, uh, turn it over to Mr. Hickson for recognitions.
Is that gonna be a standing thing? Will we, will it become a standing thing, should we redo something officially to make it one way or the other?
It wasn't in policy, I checked to see, if it wasn't in policy.
Why are we?
Yeah, it's not in rest.
It says twelve months or until the earliest vote is taken.
Mr. Hickson, are we in good?
We can do it any way you want.
Any way you want to. I didn't hear any opposition to it, so I guess next, next year if you want to change it back, you can change it back.
Well, actually, it would have to be changed now, because it says twelve months in the policy. And if it did it at the beginning of Sept-, in the September meeting of two thousand twenty, that would only be eleven months.
As now it's gonna be third thing, then.
Well, you're, you're liking what this meeting, rather than not serving, because at the end, rather than you.
Yeah.
Actually, the chair will still, will still have a Sunday, first of September, which would make, the meeting in September, which would make this meeting the third thing, please.
Well, if you put it at the end, you're in effect having to pair some, you still have.
The chair running a meeting, though, it's wrong, so.
Rather than first of September. So this one, you'll need, either way. All right, everybody says it doesn't matter, so let's leave it at the end. Oh, yeah, that's what we're, it was approving that agenda, uh, Mr. Hickson had commented, is there a motion to approve that? Charles, thank you, Miss Shedd, any questions, survey? All those in favor of approving the agenda, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign?
No.
Looks like the ayes have one no, thank you, the motion carries. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Hickson for recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Larkins, we do have one recognition event this evening, and that is Ms. Shedd introducing our student board representatives.
Good evening. This is always a great time of the year, we're getting ready to start, uh, we started a new school year, and we're also starting a new year's board. Uh, and at this time, we always recognize our new student board representatives. And I would say that the law changed, uh, last year with the legislature, and we have some new, uh, information regarding student board representatives across the state of Tennessee. That is, no more than four, uh, student board representatives can be on a board at one time, where it is in the past, we had six. Uh, and, the, uh, let's see. And that's, that's pretty much it, other than the part in our policy right now that's saying half have to be from CTE and half have to be from academic. That has been stripped altogether by the legislature. So those are the two new requirements that we're going by. And just a quick, brief, um, overview on our student board representative. Qualifications are a score of nineteen or better on the ACT, three-point-oh GPA, no discipline referrals, good standing of attendance. A petition signed by fifteen fellow students must be completed, a member of the rising senior class, and three faculty recommendations. So, uh, these young people that we're getting ready to introduce are superior certainly, and well thought of in their respective schools. Uh, first off, I'm going to, uh, introduce Hannah Lamb from Clinch. Hannah is seventeen years old and attends Clinch School. She's a twelfth grader this year, she lives in Thornhill, Tennessee, and she enjoys spending time with her family. She would like to attend Walter State Community College for nursing and work with children. And when asked she, if she could live anywhere in the world, she picked Hawaii because it seemed peaceful. I think I'm, I'm gonna go with her. So, if we could, if Hannah could stand. Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. Uh, next I have Tyler Lawson from Volunteer House School. Tyler's a senior this year, uh, and he is enrolled in Northeast Community College, where he's gonna be studying industrial maintenance. He's a proud supporter, a volunteer, and also the leader of the student section. He's also the treasurer of the SGA, and he said that has been one of the greatest experiences of his life. In his free time, he owns and operates a very successful mowing business. On Saturdays, he works at the Farmer's Livestock Market in Greenville. And he also helps run his family's cattle farm with around one hundred head of cattle. So Tyler could stand for us right now?
Busy.
Oh, for two.
Uh, and last, we have Cooper Bolton, who is a senior at Cherokee High School. Cooper is the student council president, the senior class president, the debate team president, a member of HOSA, Beta Club, Heritage Lights Youth Service Organization, the tennis team, and an active member of First Baptist Church Youth Group. He is also a clinical intern student at Ballon Health. He was selected to attend the two thousand eighteen Tennessee Governor's School for International Studies at the University of Memphis, selected as a delegate to the American Legion Tennessee Boys' State two thousand nineteen, and he attended the Tennessee Electric Cooperative's Washington Youth Tour as a Holston Electric Essay winner. After college, Cooper plans on attending medical school and becoming an emergency room doctor. And if Cooper's here, if he could stand and. And at our next meeting, we'll have some nameplates and, and the student board representatives will sit up here with our, with our board. Thank you very much.
Does that complete your recognition? Thank you, Ms. Shedd, item number eight on your agenda is recognizing our delegations. I'll recognize the Hawkins County Education Association if they're here and wanna make a statement. See this person making her way in this way?
Um, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to work with you this year, and I think our tentative meeting is set for September the twenty-third or twenty-sixth for, uh, training for bargaining, and, uh, let me know as soon as possible if I hear anything different.
Time and place.
Be here, and I'm thinking probably, I'm not sure on the time, as close as, early as possible, as you said, it would be at least at four.
Could send us an email on that, please?
Absolutely, thank you.
Education Committee, Hawkins County Commission? Mr. Hickson, you're here, do you have any comments you wanna make?
Not at this time.
Thank you for coming. At this time, I'll go back to Mr. Hickson for reports, I think we have some principals with some individual school reports.
Sir, Mr. Larkins, I appreciate that, uh, what we do, as previously mentioned, per my email back on July twenty-ninth, uh, I did state that, uh, beginning in September, I've asked our principal to summarize their data from last year, identify strengths and challenges heading into this year, and showcase their plan for systematic improvement. So we have our first three that are, are on the agenda for this school year, and that is Stephanie Mann for Carter's Valley, Jason Roach from Morsburg, and Greg Vincent from Roddy Hillville. We will, uh, start in that order, yes.
Thank you for allowing us to present our data for our individual schools to you at your meetings. Uh, at Carter's Valley, uh, if you'll look, in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, our enrollment was two hundred and fifty students. Our population, we have ninety-three point two percent were white, are white, fifty percent are economically disadvantaged, nineteen percent of our students were with disabilities. Our, my staff, I have twenty-six certified staff and eleven support staff. Our attendance, uh, this is broken up by a nine-week period, and so, as you can see on the left, the average daily attendance rate percentage. And then just some quick facts about the attendance at Carter's Valley. The chronically absent percentage is thirteen point three percent. At nineteen, the average days missed for a chronically absent student is nineteen days. Uh, on the other hand, an average days, the average days missed for a non-chronically absent student is five. I had ten students last year who missed more than nine percent, but they missed less than the ten percent. Areas that we want to celebrate at Carter's Valley, seventy-four percent of our students were in tier one last year. Uh, as you look and you see tier one, tier two, and tier three, we have, uh, an RTI, we call it JET time. But this is where we serve our kids who are below grade level or have deficit areas in reading and in math. Uh, that's determined by a testing system, it's called AIMS Web that we have, and we're able to, through this testing, to determine, uh, students' deficit areas in reading and math. And so we have a forty-five-minute period where we are able just to inundate those kids with the things that they need to fill those gaps, to help them either read better, uh, to approach, approach grade level, because these students are currently reading below grade level. And so we work to, uh, fill those gaps in that learning to read, and also any gaps that they have in their math. So seventy-four percent of our students were in tier one last year. Uh, two of our students, we moved from tier two, from tier three to tier two, but you want to go from, tier three is at the bottom, so you want them moving to tier two and then to tier one. Tier one is our core, what we do every day in our classroom. Eight students moved from tier two back into tier one or core, and by the end of the year, we, our fourth graders, we had no students in tier three. And then our fourth grade max scored a four on a T-Back measure. Um, this is our T, ten ready achievement data for ELA in grades three through four. So you're able to see, um, our Carter's Valley average versus our Hawkins County average. And that's in ELA. And this is, uh, Carter's Valley compared to Hawkins Camp, the system in math, in grades three through four. Our AIMS Web data, which goes back to our tier one, two, and three, uh, again, tier one being our classroom, what we're doing every day in our classroom. Tier two and three is what we're doing during what we call our JET time, it's a forty-five-minute period. What you want to see, while you see, uh, in tier one, we had a hundred and forty-three students, you want to see that increase, and you want to see the numbers in tier two and tier three decrease, because that means we are filling those gaps, and we are moving those kids from their areas of deficit and getting them more on grade levels, where they can perform with their peers. Our action plan for this year in Beta Traffic, we are pre and post-assessing students. With, we're administering every nine weeks pre and post-assessments on the most challenging standards. And then we will have grade level meetings during planning to compare our pre and post-assessments, and plan for any needed reteaching on those standards that the students need, and that will occur in tier one, in the regular classroom. Uh, P D opportunities, teachers will use professional development days to observe high-performing teachers within Hawkins County, as well as within other systems, but these will be pre-approved by me. Teachers will also focus on observing the best practices in those high-performing classrooms. In building school culture, uh, attend this summer, attended a P D I S training, and that's, po-, school-wide positive behavior. As a result, uh, C D S has implemented a school-wide house system. All students, faculty, and staff have been divided into one of four homes or houses. The goal is to allow students to build relationships across the grade levels. And what I would say about this section is, you all have approved to send, uh, other schools, uh, principals, teachers, to go see the Ron Clark Academy, where that is where the house system is implemented. So while we have not asked you all to approve for us to go, we have taken advantage of those schools who have gone to visit the Ron Clark Academy and drawn as much information from them as we can get, so that we can implement this system into our school. And, and our kids are excited, our staff is excited, it's building a family, uh, culture, relation, morale within our school, and it's been positive. For our accountability measures, uh, is to increase the classroom walkthroughs with a focus on rigor and best practices, and then to provide teachers who are strong in areas in the team group to share those strategies and best practices that they are implementing within their classrooms to help strengthen, uh, other teachers. Our smart goals for this year is to decrease the percentage of students that are chronically out of school for, to thirteen percent by the end of this year. To achieve a school-wide on-track and mastered average of thirty-four percent in ELA. To achieve a school-wide on-track and mastered average of thirty percent in math by the end of this year. And to decrease the percentage of students in tier three intervention by three percent from the previous school year. Yeah, so the reason I came up with the thirty-four and the thirty percent, based on our data from twenty eighteen, nineteen, if you look at where I want to decrease the percentage of chronically absent to thirteen percent, in twenty, uh, eighteen, nineteen, our chronically absent was fifteen point two percent. So we want, our hope is to decrease that even more than thirteen percent, but we've, uh, we're approaching it realistically, and we are looking at a thirteen percent, but we're hoping that we can actually decrease that even more. Uh, on the thirty-four percent for ELA, currently, we're at twenty-eight point nine of our students that are on track and mastered. So we want to increase that to thirty-four percent, and then currently, we're at twenty-five percent in math, so we wanna increase our on-track and mastered to thirty percent. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Mann, is there any, any questions up, uh, first?
Is this new? Have you ever committed this before, is this your standard goals?
This, so these came from our past last year's data, so no, these are all new goals for this school year.
But you set these same goals every year?
Well, not necess-, we always, we set an ELA goal and a math goal, and, and we address chronically absent students. So yes, while these are the categories, I would say that we set goals for, the percentages and the data changes. Yes, and so we have also the nine-week measures where we are looking, where the pre and post-assessments that we are creating to track data on standards that students are not doing well on, that's also new as well for this year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Mann. Recognizing Mr. Roach from Morsburg Elementary School?
So, uh, Morsburg Elementary School, um, our enrollment's a little bit smaller than Carter's Valley, we, last year, were at a hundred and sixty-five students. I would add that it is back, uh, this year, we're currently sitting at one fifty-nine, I actually added one today, so I wanna add that. So we saw a little, seen a little bit of drop, but we fluctuate every year between, uh, one sixty and upwards of one seventy. Uh, we're ninety-six point four percent, uh, white students, uh, our others are made up of our black Hispanic, um, subgroups. We're considered forty-four percent economically disadvantaged, which is why we're considered a Title I school, we receive Title I funding as a result of that, which goes for a lot of our technology and, and programs that we implement at school. Uh, twenty-two percent, if you wanna round up, of our students have disabilities. These are students that re-, they are considered, uh, students with special needs, so if you think about that, that's a little more than one out of every five of our students have, have disabilities. Twenty-one, uh, certified teachers, and we have fifteen amazing support staff at Morsburg. Um, last year, we did meet our average daily attendance goal, uh, the goal is ninety-five percent, and I think we, we beat that by just a little bit. Um, we were ten percent, uh, ten point seven percent chronically absent. And I know as we're throwing out these terms, a lot of us, you know, we, we're using a lot of teacher terms and educator terms, so if you want me to clarify any of these, please interrupt me any time. But chronically absent means that a student has missed ten percent or more of the school year for any reason, and that can be for doctor's notes, that can be for suspicions, or that can be for parent notes. So for whatever reason, so we're, we're working on, uh, trying to decrease that, we were at ten point seven. I added up twenty percent, uh, twenty, pardon me, twenty days were missed by students who were considered chronically absent, as opposed to the students who were not, which they missed six. Um, and my group that we're, we're identifying as students who are in danger of becoming chronically absent, uh, and I know these times students, we're working with them to try to keep them from getting to that ten percent. So, uh, they missed, uh, we had nine, and we're right there on the board. If you'll notice for period one, we already finished period one, we averaged ninety-eight percent attendance in period one. That's something we're really proud about at Morsburg Elementary School. Uh, and then I ran the numbers for this week, and for this week, there was one day that I had one student out of a hundred and fifty-nine absent. So we're, our kids wanna come to school at Morsburg, and we're, we're very proud of that, we have the house system as well, like Carter's Valley does, and, uh, we believe that we built a positive culture where kids wanna come to school. Uh, so anyway, those are just some quick little attendance, uh, facts about us. I, I wanted to throw our tier one, tier two, and tier three groupings up, just to show you, you know, RTI is that response intervention square, where you take student skills and you drill into those skills in order to try to make up ground. So what we try to rule out is, does, does a student have a. So what we try to rule out is, does a student have a skill deficit or is an attendance problem? Something like that. We try to drill in on those specific skills so that we can catch these kids up and get them on level. And as Ms. Man already mentioned, we want to see that Tier One grow and Tier Two and Tier Three shrink. And you can see throughout our math intervention, Tier Three, we went from twenty-one percent, which, if you think about it, once again, is one in every five students that were receiving RTI was a Tier Three student. We went to twelve percent, so we decreased that quite a bit. So ELA, our reading tiers as well, you see that we went from thirty percent to sixteen percent. We cut that in half in Tier Three. So we were, we were really proud of the work that we did in RTI last year, which gets us to some of our areas to celebrate. Our first grade math teacher, she's amazing. She completely eliminated her Tier Three intervention group along with the help of our support staff. And we, I'm going to tell you, our support staff, they're amazing. They work with our kids every single day. They got in there and they dug in deep, and we eliminated Tier Three in first grade. That's huge. K-two math, they averaged nine percent higher gains on AIMS Web than the national average. Our AIMS Web universal screener compares our students against the national norm. AIMS Web is a huge system where lots of kids are assessed from the East Coast to the West Coast. So we had nine percent higher gains. Our fifth grade math score was a four on the T-Box measure, which is above expectations. We're doing a great job there with our fifth grade math teacher. Our three to five math averaged a twenty-one percent growth in Tier One students as a cohort. So we showed a lot of growth with AIMS Web. In ELA, seventy-five percent of our kindergarten students were on or above or well above grade level. We have an amazing kindergarten literacy teacher that works with those kids, pulls them out of those lower tiers. And you've got to remember, these, a lot of these kids come to us having never been in school. And so now they walk in with zero skills. You know, we tie shoes and wipe noses, but we also teach them how to read too. So we're really proud of the work that they do there. Seventy-seven percent of our first grade students were above or well above grade level. We decreased Tier Three intervention by eight percent. And our third grade had eighty-eight percent of their students in Tier One. Eighty-eight percent of our students in Grade Three needed no intense intervention. That's pretty awesome. I might want to get into a whole lot of this, but I just wanted to show you the average gain for Reading Language Arts, because I thought this was worthy to pull up for you all. The solid line is Mooresburg, the dotted line is the national sample. So you can see we're outperforming the national sample in third, fourth, and fifth grade Reading Language Arts by quite a bit. So our RTI program is strong. We have an interventionist who's with us here at the time, Miss Corry. She is a data tracker, if there ever was one. She's a bloodhound for data. So she tracks that as we, as we progress with RTI program. And we know that we're, we're really implementing that with the data. Here's where I feel like we have got to grow as a school. AIMS Web, we're showing lots of growth in. Our decreasing of the tiers, we're showing lots of growth in. Our T-Box for the Ten Rating Achievement and Growth Peaks. Last year, we were a, this is not last year, the year before last, we were a composite four for growth. We were really proud of that score. Last year, that changed. We dropped. So I wanted to put in, the light blue line is the district average. You see right here, the solid blue line is Mooresburg, and then the yellow line is the state average. And what I did is I pulled only the third, fourth, and fifth grade averages for the state. I put them together and just did an overall average for the three years. So this, this is everybody. This is third, fourth, and fifth grade, all put in for a three-year cohort, the third, third, fifth cohort for a three-year growth. So you can see, we're just slightly above thirty percent. I believe it's thirty-one point four on average. Thirty-one point four percent of our students are on track or mastered for ELA. For math, we dropped a little bit there. We're, you can see, we're below the district average and below the state average. But we did see a slight growth. You can't really tell in this, in this graph between two thousand and eighteen and nineteen. It was like a, like a point five percent growth. So we're stagnating. So for us, the key here is to dig deeper with our instruction, become a little bit more rigorous, and bring this up to our goal, which is thirty-five percent, which we're about to get to. Our action plan, and board members, I just want to share with you how proud I am of my staff. Whatever we need to grow in, I want to say that I take ownership for that. I think at the end of the day, it's my job to help push our school over the hump, and we have a hunt to cross. I'm going to admit that. But I believe with the staff that I have, I wouldn't change anybody on it. I believe I've got the dream team that I can use to make this happen. Data tracking is what we have to go to. I noticed as a principal, I was leading them in tracking their data as well as I could have. So we're creating our data walls. We've got a school-wide data wall that we created in our conference room out back. We borrowed that idea from JRPE and from Churchill Elementary. We worked together with them a lot, and so we borrowed that. I will be posting our achievement data for the community to see. It's not where we want it to be, but I want our community to know we know it's not where we want it to be, and we're going to get better. We're going to increase the rigor of our PLC program. PLCs is your professional learning collaboration, and we know that we need to dig a little deeper in how we're using that time that I'm pulling teachers out of classes to work with one another. We're digging into the four critical questions. It's this, this program, Richard Dufour is the guy that created the PLC format. So we're going back to the basics and digging in with him. And we're going to try new strategies. If they don't work, we'll come away and try others, and we're using data to drive that. We're changing the focus of our PD. Our culture has improved dramatically at Mooresburg Elementary School between our staffs. If you were to look at our teacher perception surveys, we've really changed the way that our, our culture has been at Mooresburg. However, we've got to get a more of an instructional focus. We've got to get through the nuts and bolts of what it is to be a classroom teacher and a classroom principal, because that's what I, I know that I need to transition to. Every faculty meeting, we have small training sessions, and we're going to lean on our district resources. We've already had Ms. Lori Allen in our building. We've already had Ms. Regina Russell in our building, walking through, helping teachers. Melinda Miller, our math coach, has already been there, so we're already leaning on them. And our accountability measures, I meet classrooms more often doing more walkthroughs. I'm collecting data on those to see what we need as a, as a building. And I've already collected a lot of very useful data through a lot of the walkthroughs that I've done. So we have, with all of that, we will get to these SMART goals, which we want to decrease our chronically absent students from ten point seven to eight point seven. We're going for thirty percent in ELA by the end of school year two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. Thirty-five percent on track and mastered in math by the end of next year. And we want to decrease the percentage of students in Tier Three intervention by three percent. So we want to shrink those Tier Three kids even more. So our, our goals, we, we've got a way to go. This is a good first step, and I look forward to coming back next year and showing y'all all some things that we did again. Does anybody have any questions about Mooresburg's data or anything I shared?
I have a question, Mr. Roach. Does specialty fall into these categories of data too? Are they separate, or how do they?
Okay, so that's a good question, Ms. Roach. I included them in the data to start with. I actually pulled them out and just did what the, the state shows us as our Ten Rating on track master, because it's a different test. It's called the MOS test. It's a special education test that students, okay, let me back up. Some special education students can take the Ten Ratings, some do take MOS. So for special education students that took the Ten Rating, yes, they're included. Students that took the MOS test, which is different, are not. But it doesn't change the data very much. It's very similar.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Before I, I wrap up, I just want to say really quick, I, being a principal in Hawkins County is a blessing for me. I look, I see Ms. Bolton, she was my eighth grade language arts teacher. I see, let's see, the principal of Rockville Middle School, where I went to middle school. I see Coach Floyd, who was a teacher at Cherokee when I went there and graduated. There's people all over this, this room today who made an impact on me. And I want to say how proud I am of Hawkins County schools, and I believe in the product that we are producing right now, because I am a product of that. And what y'all know is that I came to Hawkins County schools from a bad situation. I was awarded the state. My teachers didn't know that, but I came out of a really, really bad situation. And Linda Long, my social studies teacher in Cherokee High School, maybe you want to be a history teacher. So thank you all, Hawkins County, for what you do. I appreciate it. I'm proud to be a Hawkins County principal.
Mr. Roach, I'm looking at you.
I do. My wonderful staff at Mooresburg Elementary School, my bloodhound of RTI data person right there, Ms. Renner, third grade math. Dr. Manning will still blame her. She was mine, y'all took her, right? Dr. Simberly, my kindergarten math teacher, and Ms. Jennifer, my ELA, my kindergarten ELA teacher.
Great. Thank you. Great. Senator Rockville.
I'd like to compliment Mr. Roach. One thing I heard in his voice was a passion for his school, and I think that's common throughout Hawkins County. And I'll tell you what, I was having a presentation up at Rockville Middle School one day, and a parent came up and she said, "I could tell from the tone in your voice, you're passionate about your school." And I said, "Ma'am, I think that's a best compliment that you could have given me," and I. You mentioned, you called a few people out of the crowd, and I, whenever I have things, I always ask, "Are there any Rockville Middle School or Rockville High School alumni present?" And watch the hands go up. The thing is, is, you know, one thing about Rockville Middle School that I think is very unique is we've got a lot of kids. You'd be hard pressed to find anyone that grew up here in town that doesn't have some sort of connection with the families up here at Rockville Middle School or Rockville High School. So I'm going to, I've never been hard pressed to talk about Rockville Middle School, so I appreciate the opportunity to come up here and walk through this. Little bit of demographic information. I'm going to start, I'm going to take, talk a little bit about eighteen, nineteen, and kind of that in with nineteen, twenty as well. Last year, we had four hundred and seventy-three students. Our demographics were forty-five point two percent economically disadvantaged, five percent the blacks, black, Hispanic, Native American, and fourteen point six students with disabilities. I know that attendance countywide, I think statewide is also have been at a decrease. This year, we're well over five hundred, so our, our numbers are on the rise as far as our population goes. Our staff demographics, we have thirty-five teachers, a counselor, two administrators, three office staff, five instructional assistants, and five special education assistants. And I'm like you, Mr. Roach, I have great pride in my staff. I've got a lot of good teachers up here at Rockville Middle School. One thing that jumps out here in the middle, I do have a young staff. Last year, we had almost ten percent first-year teachers, and twenty-eight point five percent of our staff had less than five years' experience. So we're building, and, you know, I believe as part, one of my roles as principal, I think Mr. Roach said earlier, is to build our teachers and give them the supports that they need to grow into our seasoned teachers. And our, over on the side, you'll see we have nine language arts, nine math, three social studies, three science, four and a half related arts. That half is our band director, which we split with Bull's Gap, and five special education teachers. And that's different for this year, so, which I'll get to here in just a minute. One of our goals for this year is our attendance rates. If you go to the bar graph and go all the way down to the bottom, we had twenty-one point eight percent students chronically absent last year, which is the highest I've ever seen it. And I attribute some of that to some of the worst sickness season that I've ever witnessed as a, as a principal. We were hitting two or three weeks in, in the winter where we were getting right at seventy percent attendance rate. We saw, I think, three waves of flu come through Rockville Middle School, and strep throat, and numerous other things. And if you look at the pie chart over on the side, and I think our number got cut off, but we were right at ninety-five percent excused absence, so that means they were probably either parent or doctor's notes. So we're hoping some of this, our chronic absence, is going to naturally come up, but we have things in place that I'll get to in a minute to encourage that along. One of our goals for this year is our math data. We're, you know, putting a number of things. This is our TCAP or Ten Rating data from last year, and we have suffered some, some losses right there. But Mr. Roach talked, he gave you a good, a very good, I'll comment to that, description of our RTI program and our AIMS Web data. I put it into our triangle charts. And as you look at our sixth and seventh grade, the green would represent what you'd say Tier One students, and the yellow is Tier Two, and the red is Tier Three. And if you look at our seventh grade, and the data's over on the side, we decreased our Tier Three students from thirty-nine students to twelve last year in seventh grade. Twenty-five to nine in Tier Two. So you can see that visually on the pyramid of top. Down at the bottom, we've got the sixth grade math, and we have decreased that from thirty-five students to eleven, and thirty-eight Tier Two to twelve students. Another thing that I'll point out down in the very bottom corner, we've had an algebra program up at Rockville Middle School. Last year, we had our highest, this number represents the percentage of kids that passed the end-of-course test at the end of the year, and we had over sixty-five percent pass that test, which would give them high school credit from Cherokee High School. Our language arts, this is our Ten Rating data from last year. You'll see, we have positive growth in seventh grade, and we had other places that we're working on this year. Moving on to our AIMS Web data, we have had increases in there as well. This is our eighth grade tiers, where we have moved thirty-five students from Tier Three to eighteen, and twenty-six from Tier Two to Tier, to thirteen in Tier Two. We achieved, like I said earlier, growth in seventh grade ELA. We had level three growth, increase of four and a half percent from two thousand and eighteen. Outside the classroom, I'll mention a few of these things, because, you know, I believe it's important to get kids involved in our school. And, you know, we had sixteen state track athletes. Those places that you're telling me about, this is definitely not all of them. We had a second-place discus in two-hundred-meter dash, and third-place shuffle, as in the state, that we placed there. Next to that, we had six finalists and one winner of the Patriots Pen Contest. They were recognized up here at the American Legion, where they wrote patriotic essays in competition. I'm sure everybody saw the bottom-left-hand corner with our Rydell Grant, where we had received officially ten thousand dollars' worth of equipment, and, you know, delivered personally by Peyton Manning. I'll mention this, our numbers in football, we had thirty-five students. Last year, we had fifty-two this year. It's, in a sport that numbers are declining as well, it was amazing to see. That's why we were scrambling for jerseys, and, you know, so far, we're, we're having a good season. I'll just leave it at that. Happy to, for the inclusion of an arts club. We're concentrating on comic book arts. Just this morning, they were learning how to script stories. And I think it's important to mention that these kids, I called the teacher, and I don't have a number. So I asked Mr. Way, he's our librarian, he does a great job. I said, "Can you describe, you know, your, the students that you have up there with you in the arts club, how many of those are involved in other things throughout the school?" And his quote was, "An overwhelming majority." He estimates around eight percent. But this is the, the one thing that these kids are involved in. So we're getting kids that are not involved in any sports or any other clubs, and we're finding something that they can take ownership of and become more involved in our school. So academically, what are we doing to make improvements? We're doing a lot of things. We're making a lot of big changes at the Rockville Middle School. We've been running the block schedule since before I ever even started at Rockville Middle School. This is my eighth year, which would be designed with ninety-minute language arts and math classes and forty-five-minute science and social studies classes. And the way that configured into our schedule, we had science and social studies teachers with upward of sometimes a hundred and eighty students on their caseload, which didn't really afford them an opportunity to give a lot of individualized attention. And just, it's just a big caseload. So we've reconfigured our entire schedule. It's really comparable to what, you know, was done throughout the county into six sixty-minute classes. So every teacher has a partner teacher, every grade level, every subject. We've got a two-person team, so that cuts their caseload in half, basically. You know, we've got, we've tried to, you know, mix together our students so that they, so that teachers have them on a maroon and grade team. We're not doing a house system. We have a grade and maroon team per grade level, so that there's a four-teacher team that individually looks at this group of students, so that they can, we've made online data charts. Mr. Roach mentioned a data wall that they have. We have online data walls for all of our teachers, so that they have their individual students, where they can plot all of their AIMS Web, their Ten Rating, their personal benchmarks, and, and what their projections are for next year, so that we can individualize and differentiate our instruction to make their names. Our science and social studies teachers, they... teachers, um, they, uh, they get their party every Friday. They're, they're tickled about, you know, having a person to collaborate with in-house, because we were trying to collaborate with people at Sir Glorful and Churchill, and, and that's good, but having somebody in-house that they can sit on a daily basis and, and design their instructions. Uh, our goals, these are overarching goals. Uh, we want to increase our achievement in ALA math, and, uh, those were the line graphs I pulled up earlier. The virtual data tracking is what I just got through talking about. We've reconfigured our master schedule with increased collaboration through professional learning communities. Uh, you know, we have four just set up from the school-wide, where we're meeting as a school, we're meeting as a team, we're meeting as a grade level, and we're meeting as a subject. And, and so that we're, um, really putting forth a lot of effort to, uh, increase our instruction, our assessments, and, and ultimately our results. Um, our decrease in chronically absentee numbers, you know, I mentioned earlier, we're hoping a little bit this corrects itself, hopefully through, uh, hopefully our sickness rate goes down. But we've also impli- uh, implemented incentive programs, including like an attendance lottery, where the students that are, uh, all week will draw their names out and, and, and have some sort of reward, and we, we do that school-wide, so that they hear that and, and get that reward, and, and try to really, um, you know, bolster our, uh, ownership of the students and, and, uh, increase family involvement. When we talk about our team system, well, we're involving the teachers in the attendance as well. So if a kid misses a couple days, then we're making a phone call home. Hey, we just want to check on him and, and, uh, get him back at school as soon as we can, and, you know, send any and sort of instruction, uh, you know, maybe they can do while they're at home. And retain and develop high-quality teachers. Um, uh, Mr. Roach mentioned the literacy and math learning walks. Uh, we're doing that at Rockville Middle School as well. Our post-evaluation supplemental support and targeted professional development, put that together. That's basically, I'm looking at our teachers, I'm looking at where they're strong, where they may, may need some extra, uh, support and, and targeted that, uh, you know, based on what I say. Uh, never have a problem talking about Rockville Middle School. Glad to be up here, glad to share, you know, what we're doing and where we're at. I'll take any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Hickson and the board. Could it be possible, if this board knows how you're at, say, mid-year or at end of the year, uh, how you feel like you're achieving the expectations? See how you're moving toward your goals?
Absolutely. A couple of them mentioned that we are meeting as a principal-supervisor team monthly, and we are tracking these various same goals that they presented here tonight, and the action steps that they've identified. And we're tracking them visually, but we have, uh, data boards in this room behind you, as I mentioned a couple months ago. They're completely filled out each month that we meet, and the principals bring their data, they chart their data, they talk about their strengths, what's going well. We talk about, uh, challenges that they're in, 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 uh, occurring at their school sites, and then they collaborate with each other to come up with what's, something might be going really well at one site that they can borrow and, and take back to their own school site. So at any point, we have it digitally, and we have the data room next door. At any point, you can look at, or you can request information, and I'll get that out to you. But not only beginning middle and end, but by Monday.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think the board had committed ourselves next to Mr. Hickson during the interview process, that we would provide them with resources needed for us to be a successful district. And by you all coming tonight and sharing with us some of the challenges that you face and some of the progress that you've made, that will help us better understand. If you have needs, then of course, we will be working all together as one team through Mr. Hickson, and we'll try to respond to those needs accordingly and supply those for you. We'll be able to have that open dialogue going, and if you're struggling with an area, we just need to hear it and be able to come to your aid, and, and we are committed to doing that. So, thank you all for coming out. We really appreciate that. Thank you for staff that showed up tonight as well. We appreciate your efforts, too, and it was a good presentation, on the course of the other presentations that are upcoming in the next months. With that being said, I'll recognize Mr. Hickson in regard to the YMCA update and our Virtual Academy enrollment.
Thanks, Mr. Larkins. We do have, uh, an update on YMCA. Uh, Mount Carmel, uh, the regional director there is going to host a parent night for those, uh, three feeder schools that we are, uh, potentially bussing students to, uh, the program from, and they're gonna hold that parent night and make sure that those applications are finalized, answering questions, walk them through the program. At that point, once we have the finalized enrollment numbers, we will begin bussing, uh, but that does not start yet, because we don't have any finalized applications through the process. Um, the director there did feel that it was, uh, a very good move to, uh, proceed forward at that parent night to make sure that the parents knew that they were responsible for after-program transportation back home, what the transportation looked like from the feeder school, how that would work, and the program itself, and how it functions. Uh, once we have that in place, Roy and his staff are, are willing and able at this point to, uh, to get that bus going and to pick those students up. Uh, the numbers have been, uh, very strong though at the, at the feeder program, and, uh, they are, they do, they do have room, and, uh, that will help bolster the numbers to beyond the minimum that's required to keep that program going. So we're not gonna have an issue, uh, we don't think, in, in, in providing a strong program for the YMCA. I did meet, uh, with, uh, two representatives, as I shared last month, and they are very willing to partner with Hawkins County in a grant opportunity to potentially get YMCA up at the further end of our, of our county system as well, so that we can have an upper and a lower-end, uh, representation and opportunity for our students, uh, many of whom don't have resources to go to after school, or going home by themselves, or reporting to an empty home, and we'd much rather extend their learning opportunity for a couple hours each day if we can, and I'll do so. So, and we're looking forward to that. Hawkins County Virtual Academy, we have a total of thirty-five students. Um, ten of them are brand-new to the county, so that is brand-new, uh, brand-new enrollment numbers for our county system. Nineteen of those, so we're talking twenty-nine, nineteen of the thirty-five were set, uh, to go to other locations, albeit, uh, private school or outside the county, uh, or, or, or a, uh, independent homeschool program. So we're, we feel that that's a pretty good start to the pilot program, and you will see that reflected in our, in our request for, uh, online curriculum, because a lot of those members are coming in at the elementary and middle school, and we did not have an online curriculum in place for the online, for the elementary and middle. We did for high school. So there is gonna be, uh, some cost, but we're far outweighing the, the cost of that program by the enrollment at this point, nearly double. So, and we feel that that's a good start to the pilot program this initial year.
Let me ask this question. Would, at the semester break, would there be an opportunity to apply at that juncture? Is it just open enrollment at the beginning of the year?
We are, we are, we are entertaining any application that comes in, um, but they are on a one-by-one basis, and, and Mrs. Lindsay is interviewing the students and the parents at that point. Uh, we would prefer a nine-week or a semester break enrollment, uh, but we are taking the needs as they come, because we do have students that, uh, because of home situations or whatever the case, move into the county, they've been in an online program, and they, they want to continue that, and we are entertaining them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or Mr. Dixon on those two items? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number ten on your agenda. It's Director's School Report, and it's been working on the disciplinary hearing authority committee for twenty-nineteen and twenty school year.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Larkins. I, I do make a recommendation that we move forward and, and appoint in the DHA for this school year. Uh, I do recommend that, uh, that once that's, uh, once that's appointed, uh, I, I will move that, uh, we have Thomas Floyd, our middle school, high school supervisor, as the chair. I would like to see Greg Sturgill, all the principals and all the assistant principals listed on that committee. Based on the student that, uh, student or students that come forward throughout the year, they have the flexibility to pull the, the correct staff from our administrative team at that point.
I think you said, Mr. Thomas Floyd will be the chair, Mr. Greg Sturgill over attendance will be a member, and then all principals of elementary, middle, and high school, and intermediate, and assistant principals. Is that?
Correct, and, and I do have the list, and I can read their names into the record if, if that helps.
Does anyone wish to begin to read the names in, other than the positions? Hearing none. Um, is it a matter that we need to approve as a board? Any point of that?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion that we approve, if so be?
So good.
Motion to approve the, uh, people, Thomas Floyd's chair, Greg Sturgill, and principals of all of our schools, and assistant principals as the student, uh, discipline hearing authority. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Good. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Uh, could you go on the roll, please? Michael?
Charles.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Keith.
No.
Larkin.
Yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, that leaves us to consent agenda. There are items one through fourteen, and at this time, you would, uh, let us know if there's any item you'd like to take off consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to pool number eight to vote on separately.
Pool number eight will be removed from your consent agenda. Okay, others? All the boards looking through their packet. It's a lot of information. There are fourteen items on there.
Can I speak to the first item, if you please, the board?
Uh, just assuming, if there are others. Uh, I would like to, I would like to also pull number twelve, and that's approval of non-academic coaches. That's item number twelve in your consent agenda. It's just a small question I had, and I opposed. We'll tackle those two. Uh, any, any others you wish to take off? Matters up for motion to approve the consent agenda minus, uh, items eight and twelve. It'd be one through fourteen minus those two. Did I hear a motion to approve?
So good, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Did I hear a second? Thank you, Ms. Greg. Any, uh, further questions or debate?
I would, I would like to mention that number one, if I could, at this point. Uh, just, just to clarify, this is a new, uh, new policy, uh, dealing with school bus safety, and it adds the information regarding parent requests for video surveillance from buses, and, and attached, uh, for your, for your information as well as procedure that we would get there, and we would recommend putting in place should this policy approve, if it would be approved.
This is all commensurate with the new statute from S-PAC, motion to approve that one already. Uh, roll on approval of the agenda, please.
That's accept.
We're ready.
Page twelve.
Trent.
Yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Larkin.
Yes.
Keith.
Yeah.
Fred.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. I'll look to Mr. Christian for item number eight for discussion.
I have an update, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to express the way I feel about this.
Okay. Okay, all right then. Uh, item number twelve, I'll go ahead and speak to that. Uh, I'll go ahead and, just go ahead and address that. Item number eight on the agenda is approval of the training service agreement for building automation system at Church High in Hawkins County. Central Office Joe, the Rogers Primary, Morsburg Elementary, St. Perry Elementary, DeGromont Memorial Volunteer High School, and the contract period is October the first, twenty-nineteen through September the thirtieth, twenty-twenty, at a cost of sixteen thousand and fifteen dollars, and a three percent discount with, I imagine, one annual payment. Okay, so that's up for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion's made on Miss Chen to approve the training service agreement. Did I hear a second? Not hearing your second? The motion dies. With that being said, I'll move on to item number twelve. It's just a small correct favorable item. I noticed the, uh, assistant coach, please, assistant coach position is volunteer, denied as the athletic director, and the coaches' approval on it. I'm sure they promptly do, but it's not on there, and we would like the form to be completed. Maybe just an oversight, Mr. Dixon, and, um...
What was, what was the school's?
Uh, it was volunteer high school, disclaimant, and assistant girls' basketball coach. On our form, it didn't have the head coach and the A.D. This looks like the form, maybe Mr. Linn signed off on it, and the background check was completed, but it didn't have the two necessary signatures. It made this stuff do the cracks. If a board member wishes to waive our rules for this, I know, uh, girls' basketball will be starting soon, but if we don't get a motion, we can tackle this next month, and hopefully have enough time to address it next month with the proper credentials.
Yes, sir, I apologize, but...
At this time, does anyone want to make a motion to waive the rules and approve?
Mr. Chairman? I know we don't answer, because we work differently, we use the same place.
Just get it right to the next.
I think they've got time to do it correctly.
Everyone did take it. See members say that they wish to take it until next month? Hearing no motion, we'll take it until next month. We'll put it back on our agenda, please.
So we're taking our one, or just volunteer?
Volunteer's the only one I saw.
So it's just volunteer?
Just happened.
So we need to vote on that?
Yes, we could vote on the other ones. It's a, it's a pleasure. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the, uh, non-academic coaches, with the exception of volunteer high school, if their credentials are on this form. Uh, that would be my motion. Is that there? Did I hear a second?
I see.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Any discussion or debate?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to know just how many actual non-academic coaches we have without assistance. Like, we've approved a school busload up since I've been to the board.
Yeah, I did.
And they may come and go like, you know, the thistle, but, I don't know. And, but we never know if they go, unless we look at this, read this A-ball.
Six up here now.
It is a, it is a very transient population, but I can give you current numbers.
That looks like the number that they are versus the actual number of faculty coaches that we have.
That's, that becomes problematic towards the system. It's not your question, is having, uh, coaches slash teachers that are hired, and then that they collect not the coach anymore, but keep the teaching position, therefore we don't have a slot to bring in a new coach.
Well, I think that if you want to hire somebody to be a coach, slash teacher, that if we hire them to be a coach, they'll be the coach first.
Well, they, they do.
Well, I know, but if they decide not to coach anymore, they actually...
We hire a certified coach for teaching position as a priority, secondary, we have a coach if they, if they so desire, but it is a separate process.
Yeah, and it is problematic.
It is, but, uh, coaching is a voluntary, uh, position. Once they are employed as a certificated employee, there is no obligation to maintain a coaching position if they are meeting a budget in a certified teaching role.
I wonder if we should consider some type of, I almost say contractual, but wouldn't pin down that one. We debated it before, but it's, you know, that puts our students, our student athletes, and our school system in balance. When a coach has coached for three or four years in such a, I'm just having that into those society, that can be, understand that. But then it's problematic to bring in more coaches, because we don't have a slot to bring that certificated person in. I, I'm not saying that we need to do something. It's not a dire emergency, and we're feeling the board with these non-academic players.
Well, if you have a situation where you're a football coach who won, high school decided he didn't want to coach anymore, but he continued to teach, and then you didn't have a slot for enough for a head coach to come in, the only other alternative you'd have would be stop, you'd start having a sport.
Well, we do have the slot. We have the stifen available for that coaching position, so that's why you see some non-academic coaches being hired, because they're, in some places, they're certificated in forty states in the certificable.
Now, in the past, uh, anybody in the audience correctly, TWSAA said, "You have, you have to be a head football coach," or "head coach of a tier-one sport, you have to be certificated." But did TWSAA relax that rule? So you can bring in non-certificated people for your tier-one sports as head football coaches.
And they don't occupy a spot, a spot in, in the Mr. Hickson area. If we maintain a teaching position and that head coach resigns from coaching and maintains his teaching position, we still have the ability to hire a coach using that stifen or that, that we set aside for coaching. So it's harder to do, because they're not making a, a teacher salary in addition to the stifen, or in that case, so you have to look, it's, it's, it's very hard to staff.
Please. That's like the worst part.
Well, it's, it's being done now, so it's, it's, it's very difficult.
We got head coaches that are just receiving stifle and not a, they're not certificated.
At, at, at all levels.
I mean, in our, in our major sports, basketball, high school, football.
You're talking varsity?
Yeah, high school, high school football, basketball, baseball, whatever.
Very, very difficult to do that scenario with just this guy, yes.
Well, you can do, I mean, you could always eliminate the sport.
That is, that is an option that we've tried to avoid, and, and that's a discussion we've had as a, as a board and, and director. Uh, several times over the last eight, nine months, where we were optioned with not having any applicants for a head coaching position and risking not, not flying the, not flying the, the sport for the kids. And that's, that's, uh, that's a very, very low last level option for us, I think, as, as a board and as a system. We want to, we want to offer those opportunities if at all possible.
I'm not arguing that one, I'm arguing, I'm just not arguing really, uh, just stating facts about at some point in time. If we're gonna have to bite the bullet and determine if we're gonna have all non-faculty coaches. Or if we're gonna have mix, everything mixed up and everything else, or keep some continuity.
Well, the current system is that we prioritize our certificated staff and offer the positions for coaching first. If that does not go, then we open it up for non-faculty, so we, we do have a process in place to prioritize our certificated staff, those that have to maintain teaching positions within the district. Because those are the ones that are here, building relationships with the kids, and then extend into the sports program, so that's the best case scenario. Unfortunately, as Mr. Christian and, and I think Mr. Larkins have alluded to, teaching, the teaching requirements are increasing daily, yearly, monthly. And the behaviors are getting to the point where it's occupying a lot more time in the classroom, and a lot more focus in the classroom, and a lot more teachers, specifically the younger ones coming in. Are, are less likely to extend their day to offer some sports for, for our students, and, and that's understandable. But we're doing our best to try to attract them.
About the same, about the same token, I mean, the academic curriculum, first.
Correct.
It's about different.
Correct.
So if we're lacking there, we got problems.
I agree with all, all our leaders, I think.
I think we're waiting for other budgets that we're around, Mad Secretary, have you presented the debate?
We're approving, uh, the non-faculty coaches, except for...
Yes, sir.
Charles.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Larkin.
Yes.
Shaden.
Yes. Yes.
In regard to the train contract, I think the board just lacks a little education on that, so, Mr. Glass, if you want to get with the new chair and, uh, and the director schools. And put it on the agenda next month for a report and some education on what that contract exists, consists of, that would be most helpful, I guess. But I just don't think they're good understanding of what that detailed, if I can speak to the board, and that was my feeling. So with that being said, uh, that's the consent agenda, and that moves us to, uh... To item fourteen, no, item C on your agenda, it's approval of budget amendments, and I think there are three of those. And we can do those collectively, or we can do those individually.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion we approve, uh, budget amendments one, two, and three.
I'll say. Motion's made by Mr. Christian, and also seconded by Mr. Hicks to approve budget amendments one, two, and three. Mad Secretary, would you second, clear enough for you, do you need to repeat that or anything for us? Any, any debate or questions? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Trent.
Yes.
Shaden.
Yes.
Larkin.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
Thank you, motion just passed, moving on to item D is approval of purchases over five thousand dollars. We now have five items on there, um, so, I, I would like to, as your chair, to recommend we do those individually, since some of them are large items, large ticket items. So if we can deal with item D one, it's, uh, Ed's Annuity, I.S. Teaching Workbook, Webinars and Courses for Grades K five and six through eight. And nine through twelve, Hawkins County Virtual Academy, Ed's Annuity, Ed's Annuity Incorporated, not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars. Instruction contracted services, I guess is the fund of money that's being drawn from, is that what it means?
Yes.
Okay, that is what is on your agenda, agenda for approval, and, uh, I would ask that we have a motion, if that be your clear.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Christian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, questions?
What is?
What is?
Ed's Annuity is the online curriculum delivery and teaching system for our middle, for our elementary and middle school. We do have several high school students, um, that are, that are using it as well, that do not have access to courses through our nice longer, uh, provided coursework. But we did, as I mentioned earlier in the report section, uh, we did have quite a few, uh, elementary and middle school students that enrolled in the virtual academies. And we did need to secure a curriculum delivery system. Now, in the future, if this continues to grow, it is my desire to have our staff teach these courses, um, so that we would not have to contract out at this initial stage. And probably for the first several years of our virtual academy, we'll, we will need to, uh, contract with such agencies to bring in the curriculum for the, for the needed coursework.
Let me ask this question, is this caused offset by the number of students we're bringing back into the district and also the BEP funding?
Two, two, two to two, near two to one.
Two to one, that's what I understood earlier.
And the eighty-five thousand is a worst case scenario not to exceed, we, we probably, at this point, my estimate would be a quarter of that is needed at this point. Based on our moment, but, but we want to have enough, so I don't have to bring back an amendment, I can bring back a report every once in a while on the enrollment and what we're spending. But the eighty-five creates a ceiling that we would not exceed this year, and, and in my estimation, wouldn't even come across.
Did they put a cap on us of a number of students, perhaps hundred as a benchmark, or is there such a cap?
This, this would roughly give us enough room for nearly a hundred students in the virtual academy. And, and looking at the, the fact that we're at thirty-five, six weeks into the school year, I don't think that we're gonna come near that, even at the semester moment.
Uh, other questions?
Our ADA is roughly seventy-eight hundred per student, so if you factor those ten new students that we have, uh, coming into the system, that's, that's the offset just in that faculty load.
Good, alright, any comments?
So, where do those funds come from?
Those funds?
Yeah, where does the eighty-five thousand come from? I mean, even though it's coming back, it ain't gonna come back, if we spend it tomorrow, it ain't gonna come back again, but...
Uh, it's coming from our general fund. So it is, it is a hit to the current budget, but we will recoup those funds throughout the school year.
Got you. Alright, any other questions?
Charles.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Larkin.
Yes.
Shaden.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
I, I do, before we go, sorry, I'm, I'm not trying to belabor this, but I wanted to thank the board for, uh, their faith and trust that we could pull this off. I think it's going to be a very successful option for some students within the county. Um, I went to a presentation a couple of weeks ago, and, and the, the Commissioner of Education said that if we aren't, uh, progressive in public education, we will be competing directly with charters. The more proactive we can be in offering a, a menu of items for our stakeholders, our parents and our students, the more successful we will be. And specifically, these types of issues are really hitting the rural school system. So I want to applaud you for having faith in us to go down this road, uh, it is a very rigorous program. Uh, students, students are being challenged, uh, they are going to be testing, they are assigned up for their home schools, so their, those tests do count for the home school. Their attendance counts for their home school, their enrollment counts for the county, and it's a win-win across the board. Uh, it's, it's, it's very successful, and I wanted to also mention that I'm extremely proud of Ms. Sharon Lindsay for, for pulling this off and working her tail off during the summer to make sure that it was set up successfully and, and got off the ground. So, uh, kudos to, to her and her team, and then we're looking forward to what it can become.
And I believe these same students can participate in all of our extra free opportunities as well.
I like this, I like this boards across the board, yeah.
One of the things I remember in our interviewing process, and you had mentioned to us, and this was one part of your vision, coming to Hawkins County, and it looks like it's kind of a tradition. So, thank you for having the insight and mission to do that, so it looks like it's, it's real, thank you.
I'm being curious about the virtual academy, and I think it's gonna be a one, two, but let's say I'm a junior high school, and I want to take a higher level. That is not enough. Can I take it through virtual academy while still being a full-time student?
So, so that would be a dual enrollment type scenario, so that, that is an option that we will explore here this year. Uh, we don't have currently any students that are attending class in their, fully within their, their school day and taking the virtual academy. But it is very, it is a very flexible opportunity, and we, we absolutely can do that here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, motion passes, and we'll move on to item two, case online student assess. Is that supposed to be access, or is that assess?
It's a, it's an online assessment.
Assessment, okay. Benchmark assessments for elementary, middle schools. In case data fees, professional development, and data review session webinar. Test item bank for grades two through twelve for Hawkins County Schools, two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. A total of fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-six dollars, coming from general purpose evaluation and testing funds.
These are, these are the tests before you, uh, I guess you can make a motion to...
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Christian, do we have a second?
Second.
Any, Kathy, that's great. You're good, she made the second, now, go ahead.
It is, it is the case online assessment is what we are giving, uh, at, at every school level, uh, grades two through twelve. Uh, it is part of the data management system, the assessment system that we talked about with our three principles tonight. It is something that we have used for several years, and this does include a, a test item bank, as it's mentioned there. That we can pull from, depending on what standard each school side or each grade level decides on for a short cycle goal. Reading two point five, for example, they can then go into the assessment bank if we purchase it tonight. And they can pull test items that they can pre-construct to really chart for growth during that, uh, instructional period for that specific standard. So it gives us a lot of flexibility, not just with the formal testing per quarter that we're looking at, but also from that item bank.
And that data comes from TinReady testing, uh...
It's, 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 it's aligned with the standards that TinReady assesses. So this, this is an additional level of data that we are able to track throughout the school year for growth in our students at any given point.
Have we had this before, this is?
Yes.
So this is something that...
Yeah, we have not had the, the test item bank for that grade level span before, but we are asking to add that portion so that we can have the flexibility to pull that for informal assessment. The item bank, is that what the question was?
Why does it count so bad?
It is completely online, it's accessible to all of our teachers, we have to buy licenses for that testing, it's a secured system, so the secure, the security does cost. I'm not arguing that it's, uh, that it's, uh, maybe even market value, but it is what it is. And, and this is a system that a lot of our surrounding systems are using very, uh, very effectively. Most of which, uh, made the most gains, I think, of Sevierville and, and others that really use this to track their data every nine weeks, and they did extremely well in their growth. And they attributed a lot of that to the case. So I, I wouldn't recommend it if, if we weren't going to efficiently use every last dollar of that, and that's a lot of dollars, so it's a lot of work.
Any, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, please call the roll, Mad Secretary.
Shannon.
Yes.
Shaden.
Yes.
Larkin.
Yes.
Keith.
You say name, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Pratt.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Item three is language live reading program, grades eight through twelve for students with disabilities, Voyager, Sopris, Learning. Total of sixty-six thousand, fifty-five dollars coming from special ed funds and ADA discretionary grant funds.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Christian, and seconded by?
Second.
By Ms. Shaden. Questions about this one? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Charles.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Larkin.
Yes.
Shaden.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Item number four is Teach Point Online, Personal Development Tracking Application, Annual Service Teach Point. Total of six thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, title of two late funds, what's title two?
Title two, certificated staff development fund.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Christian, second. By Ms. Gray, questions and comments? Hearing none, call the roll.
Trent.
Yes.
Shaden.
Yes.
Larkin.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Last item on your approval of purchases over five thousand dollars is number five. One Covota commercial zero turn mower for Volunteer High School, Covota Keith's Board, total of nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Comes from nineteen twenty athletic funds, uh, that's really close to our bid margin. Did we seek out other bids sometime? Any other motion, yes, second?
We did at the, both, both at the school level, when they were looking for a particular mower, mower that they needed, and as well as our vetting process here at the central office.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It is part of the fifty thousand dollars of facility, sorry. I'm, I'm getting dirty looks.
Where in first, why you gotta suck, we just need to play.
I'm just kidding, Mr. Christian. I just wanted to say that we did our due diligence and shopping for that as well as, um, I'm sorry, was that supposed to...
She said it, okay.
We tried to hurry.
Motion by Mr. Christian, second, Ms. Charles, have a look here.
We, um, it is a mower that they do need at Volunteer, it is part of the fifty thousand dollars, but as Mr. Larkins alluded to earlier, it is over the five thousand dollar mark. So we want to be transparent in our expenditures, and that's why it's on the approval list.
And that was the best deal?
Yes, for that particular mower, it is, and it needs the requirements to be...
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, call the roll. Ms. Charles?
Now wait, you don't want to...
I was listening.
Charles.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Larkin.
Yes.
Shaden.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. We'll move on to unfinished business. We had a athletic committee meeting most recently, and it's athletic facility funds and pilot list, I, I don't know who's working on that, Mr. Hicks?
I have it ready for you, uh, these items were funded for purchase, and the total came to forty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. They are as follows, at Cherokee High School Stadium P.A. system, a gym P.A. system, and sideline chairs. Churchill Middle, two basketball scoreboards. Sir Goinsville Middle, two basketball scoreboards, one baseball scoreboard, and one softball scoreboard. Volunteer High School, one Covota mower that we just voted on, one sideline mat and one track and field, uh, mat, uh, and, and items. And that total again came to forty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. We are working with the school sites to get in the request this spring for next year's, should be, should it be approved, uh, fifty thousand dollar improvement list.
I believe the balance is about twenty-one hundred dollars in that fund, I believe, fifty thousand originally?
Yes. So we did, uh, we went pretty close to the total, and, and I think the school sites, uh, are gonna get some much-needed equipment out of that, so I thank the board for that.
Any questions to Mr. Hickson about, uh, the athletic facility funds? I'm glad we were able to do that and give them some assistance, I know it's real hard to raise those funds in-house, but, uh, thank you.
I want, I want to thank the board as well as the chairman thanking you, because it made a lot of, not only coaches, but boosters and parents. It's a very positive thing for us, but I do have a question, not about Keith, it's from the athletic committee meeting. We, uh, discussed procedures and maintenance.
They are, they are drafted and they're ready to go.
Can we get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
That's something you want to submit to us?
Yes, there was, there was a couple of, uh, bringing, bringing that back to point, there were a couple of things requested. One was to look at the cost, uh, the cost of having staff mow, what we would need if we, if we ran the maintenance of those sports facilities in-house. And then what it would cost to do a contract for those services as well.
Specifically?
Football field, inside defenses.
Not applying surface.
Correct, just inside defenses.
Inside defenses, but not applying surfaces, because that trend is very difficult.
Yes, very ill, ill sized in most of, yeah.
Thank you.
So we have those three items to bring back, and I didn't, and, and since you asked, I didn't know if we wanted that to come back to the athletic committee or to the board first, and then to the athletic committee.
Want to show, take it and kind of tweak and bring it back, please.
Okay. Yeah, we'll take it to the...
Okay.
Take it to the chief.
Those, those three items, the two items on the cost are still being worked on, but the procedural manual is, is drafted and ready to go.
Okay.
Is there anybody opposed to that method of Mr. Hickson bringing that information back to the committee, letting the committee look at it, and then bring it to the full board? Is there any opposed to that, saying, shaking their hands, it's like this would be okay? and then bring it to the full board? Is there any person that's saying, shaking their hands, it's like this would be okay and it's not a matter of vote on? Uh, item B is update on the school system cost analysis. I know Mr. Hickson's been contacting several folks on this matter and, uh, if you could update us where you're at.
I have, uh, reached out to two, uh, firms that, that initially expressed an interest in helping us with that. Um, I am leaning more toward one individual and he has yet to forward me, uh, what that cost would look like, but it would encompass, uh, the per, per pupil cost at each of the school site as well as, uh, as well as, uh, faculty costs at all of the departments throughout the district. Uh, if you'll notice down on item, uh, what is that, twelve C, the energy and operational cost analysis. Uh, we do have an option if we wanted to go with that, uh, individual company there to give a, a operational cost analysis, which we could then package with the individual I'm talking to and save some additional money on behalf of the school system in order to accommodate, uh, that audit that was requested. So, um, long story short, I will get that data back to you, those numbers. I can share it via email between now and next board meeting and then we can vote if, if on that, uh, end of October, if that sounds feasible. But I should have hard numbers for us to look at then. The, the entities out there that want to do the scope of work that we are asking for, for what we're willing to spend on it. Uh, but we do have a fine individual, actually two companies to be honest, uh, that, that have supplied some insight on that and, and they have been very helpful.
Look for, you read more information on that next month. Under new business, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. I have some questions about that from some folks, uh, since we first started talking about doing a cost analysis. And it's, it's apparent that some of them don't understand why we're doing it again. And I don't know, I mean, I, I think I understand why, but it appears that maybe some of the people in the public don't understand why we're doing a cost analysis at this point in time and especially with an emphasis on cost per student.
Well, the, the, uh, the answer to that was there was a perception that, that the numbers that were presented uh, to make the case to potentially close two schools, uh, in the past in, in Hawkins County history, uh, weren't, uh, weren't perceived as being valid. They, they were perceived as being biased in their approach to the expenditures, to the totals that were presented. So in order to deal with that perception, which also came out in our public, uh, our public comments that we held on our special board meeting in July, uh, I'm sorry, was it June?
June? July?
July. Uh, those, those, those public comments, a lot of them, uh, centered around the idea that there was a lack of trust in the numbers that the system provided to the public relative to closing those two schools. One of those data points was the per pupil cost, specifically how much the BEP covers in our staff to student ratio at all of our school sites and how much local funds are being used to support the staffing at our lower enrollment school sites. So, our intent in hiring somebody from the outside that we're not associated with is to provide an unbiased, perceptually unbiased, um, and trustworthy report that we could then act on in, in general.
Okay, well, some of those, some of those, uh, local fund costs are relevant to every school, but, I mean, if, if you look at the numbers that came back on Kepler individually, there's a lot of those numbers that are relevant to every school, not just Kepler.
You're right. There's, there's a portion of the local.
The four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars could be incurred, though some of those figures could be incurred, well, they are incurred at every school.
Uh, some of those are not. Not to the same extent or ratio and that's what the study was.
Well, well, I understand, but I guess misconception is, is for the public, as based on the question that I was, uh, that it, it's pretty apparent, uh, based on that analysis, that the cost per student's gonna be higher at smaller schools than it is at larger schools. I mean, that's, that's, I mean, that, that rock size, I think that one.
You're talking specifically the ratio between the BEP funding from the, and the local dollars, you're right.
Yeah. So, you know, it's going, uh, uh, especially, and this, this, this particular question was if, if included in that maintenance costs. Because if we have neglected to keep the maintenance up on our schools, then, uh, certainly if we come up with a projected maintenance cost uh, for a drop dead thing, project on school, uh, then, uh, for something we should have been doing is preventing maintenance over a course of years, then that come, that's gonna skew the figures too. I'm not gonna ask that question. That sounds like warm man. I, I think that answers most of the questions.
Ask some questions, Aron, if you would please, board. Uh, go to Mr. Dixon and let him attempt to answer those questions for you and, uh, get back with our constituents as soon as we can and let them know that we are very interested in trying to answer all questions about the issue and, uh, it's very important. Moving on to, uh, are you finished, Mr. Dixon? Anything else on that?
No, sir.
Okay. And if you plan to have another update for the month of October for us as well?
All right. I, I will have hard numbers on, uh, specific items.
Thank you. Item number twelve on your agenda is new business and we'll go to A, which is Clinch School and the schedule change. Thanks, Benabru.
Uh, if you remember last spring, there was an idea that, uh, that, that we talked about, never made it to the official board as a whole, but there was an idea that, uh, we may need to look at, um, reducing the school schedule due to the, uh, length of drive and the length of time it's taking our staff to reach this, the, the school as well as, uh, as well as some students, uh, due to those road closures and we're talking specifically Route sixty-six and Route seventy. Uh, I've been getting regular updates from the Department of, uh, of Roads and Transportation and they are, they are telling me at best one lane, potentially on the seventy, will be open at the end of October and we're looking at best first part of November for sixty-six. Uh, with that in mind, uh, I did approve Denise, uh, the, the principal over at Clinch to go ahead and survey her parents in case we decided to entertain such an idea as to the, uh, the impact it would make on them if we looked at an, uh, uh, an extended Monday through Thursday day schedule with the idea of, uh, reducing our, uh, school week from, from five to four days. Uh, so they would make up minutes Monday through Thursday to account for that instructional time on Friday and then, uh, once the roads open, we would revert back to a five day a week schedule. Uh, that was done with a survey to parents and, and, uh, Miss, and the principal did follow up with a parent meeting earlier this week. I'm bringing it to the board because we did get a commissioner of education approval through her legal team if we decide to move forward as a board. Now, the way that it states in the, in the, uh, in the law is that if the Department of Education approves that for a school system, it does not need to come to the board, but I am not doing that. I've made a choice. I made a, a choice with Denise. She, she wholeheartedly agrees with this, that we are bringing it to you, um, as a recommendation, uh, to ease the, uh, the amount of travel. Our staff is incurring and some students are incurring due to the road closures, but it is completely your decision and we will stand behind that decision. But it is legally approved at this point. The instructional minute, uh, plan has been approved and the parents have largely, and I'll let Denise, she is here, she can tell us how much of a percentage were possibly, uh, uh, against and how much were before, but it was, uh, or, or for the proposal, but it was overwhelming in, in support of it.
As Ms. McKee is coming forward, uh, one of the things I'd ask you to do is try and get that survey from the parents to make sure all the parties were on board and also from Mr. Benavides on his transportation to make sure they could accommodate the earlier times since we've got an extended day. You did both of those things and?
We, and, and yes, I did and, and we also worked with Mandy and Kurt nutrition staff to make sure that no employees at the school site, whether their transportation, office staff or, uh, nutrition staff are impacted by the resulting schedule as far as their hourly wages and salary. And we are able to make accommodations through that extended day, uh, to make sure that no one is losing, uh, pay during this time.
As the peer line, all parties are on board with this recommendation.
This point, yes.
I recognize, Ms. McKee.
Your recommendation would be to?
Go to the four day schedule until the very, one of the road opens, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that time of motion.
Can we get the timeframe for the day?
Let's get a, a motion and, uh, nevermind. Stop that, okay. Well, can I get a motion? Mr. Christian's made a motion, motion is seconded and, uh, we're gonna get into the details. Question was, what?
Could, could we, could we get the hours of operation going in motion?
Yes. Can you tell us what you had proposed? I read it. I don't know what it is.
I, I propose that, um, Clinch, uh, go to a four day schedule, Monday through Thursday, beginning at seven thirty a.m. until three forty-five p.m. That would account for the, uh, instructional hours missed on Fridays. Um, we calculated, um, at the time, we had put the proposal to the state to begin August, uh, nineteenth, but the state, you know, they vetted it and they had to do their legal due process and Commissioner had to grant, uh, give her approval and so that was delayed. Um, but we had originally done where we would have fourteen Fridays if we went to the end of the semester, um, that were being missed by students, but, and then calculated up the time. But with it being pushed back a few weeks, um, it was originally gonna go to seven thirty to four o'clock, but now it's seven thirty to three forty-five. Um, and then, um, the buses, the doors would open at seven ten. Our buses arrived already at seven fifteen. Uh, they were out there in the parking lot at seven ten, so there's no difference in the students getting up any earlier or anything like that. And the majority of our students are bus drivers. Um, and we did survey our, uh, parents and we had zero percent, uh, to oppose to it. Um, they understand we had a parent meeting on Tuesday night, uh, and, uh, only two parents showed up and they wanted the, you know, facts, um, which we were gonna send. I've been doing all calls home just to give them updates, you know, what the schedule would look like and that, because it was, uh, proved by the board that we would then begin Monday, this Monday, September ninth.
I understand the Department of Transportation has projected the end of October, but would it be safer on our part as a board to go ahead and go through the end of the semester or?
I think the wording, I, I think the word, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, too. Um, the wording, uh, I believe says until one bird is open for use. So it doesn't give a time, that's from the State Department? Uh, is that correct?
That is, that's what we, that's what we have petitioned the, the state to, to entertain this fact that as far as, once we have an accessible route, even if it's one lane and it's staggered traffic back and forth, uh, we would revert back to that five day a week schedule.
Is Mr. Benavides, is he satisfied with the one lane for transportation and so forth with our buses? Is that, is that safe?
As, as long as law says that it's okay to do, then that's, I mean, we should be fine. But once it's open, it, it will be open to whatever vehicle is involved.
The, uh, I, I would like to clarify that in working with Roy and his team, we, we would offer opportunities for his staff that are being sure they're gay to work, uh, uh, in other locations within the county to make up that, that time period. And he is working with his drivers to see of the three that are, that are driving in, in Clinch, which ones would be open to coming over and, and filling other routes or riding along with other, uh, bus drivers. We did, uh, we did talk about the idea that we have some behavior concerns on some of our routes and, and we may use this time to put a driver that's not being used on a Friday, uh, on a bus with a driver and help with another set of eyes, build eyes on those buses, so. Uh, we will make the best effort we can and it will be largely up to the employee whether or not they wanna make up that time on Friday. But, but every opportunity will be afforded to them.
What I heard from one of the staff was that they live fifteen minutes from school and now taking them an hour to get to school from fifteen minute drive because of the closure.
Yes. And I would just like to say, we did research, um, and that's what we submitted to the state. There are, um, over five hundred districts in the country that do a four day, uh, week school schedule and the, um, data has shown that, uh, achievement has either stayed the same or improved, especially in math and that teacher attendance and student attendance have improved. Um, so, um, we feel pretty confident, you know, that, we feel pretty confident that this will not impact, you know, instruction, uh, for our students. In fact, you know, with the road closures, um, our teachers sometimes have to take a whole day off for a doctor's appointment, you know, just because of the amount of travel time, so we had a sub in there and, you know, we appreciate our subs, but it's always best to have a certified teacher in place, so, um, we, we just feel pretty confident and so does the community that it, it won't affect the quality of instruction.
Uh, Denise is, is, uh, committed to collecting as much data during this, this short time period we're talking about as possible and, and we'd like to do that when we're given these, uh, creative circumstances because we never know when we're going to have to look at creative solutions down the road. If there's a, if there's a turn for the, uh, for the worst in the economy, if there's something that happens and we have to reduce staff in the future and that's, again, worst case scenario, it's good to have data to, to stand on that says that, hey, we, we can pull out the four day work. We, we can do some things, uh, with, with reduced time, uh, during the course of the school week that still accounts for high levels of instruction and, uh, academic success.
So instructionally, it'd make more sense to go to a term end to finish this schedule if we were gonna go back to a five day schedule. Is that the logic behind this?
I, yeah, I, I would think so, just to keep consistency.
The, uh, the, uh, the wording from Mr. Rainwater, the, at the Tennessee Department of Education does state that, um, your request states that you will extend the school day by ninety minutes, Monday through Thursday and close school on Friday each week until one of the routes is open for appropriate use. It says here that pursuant to my above reference authority and according to your proposed plan, I hereby grant this waiver request to the Clinch School for one semester, so it's a maximum of one semester.
So, we couldn't, so?
Do we have to go back and?
Director said that we didn't have to go into this board.
I, I did, uh, that's a good question. I would recommend that we take board action on this based on the recommendation just because I wanna be, make sure that we are all in this together and, and it's not just the school site pushing it. It's not just a portion of our board, uh, but yes.
Could you, could you amend your motion to include up to the end of the semester? Let the other run.
I made the motion that we condense Clinch's school week to four days from?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty to three forty-five until the end of this semester.
Corner border, Mr. Chairman. You've already got a motion on the floor. If you're gonna do anything, you got amendment cockpit.
All right. Motion, motion's been made, seconded and, uh, any further debate on that? Hearing none, we need a vote on that now.
On the first one?
On the first one.
Not necessarily. You can make the amendment, leave a vote on the amendment in the original motion. That's the rule, that's the, that's the order. So whatever more information you need in that motion needs to be in form of an amendment.
And that was my amendment.
That, I think that's what he just did.
I say that Chris is, I mean, uh?
If the amended, if the amended motion is read back by the secretary, then reflect the amendments to that first motion. We can vote on it.
Ms. McKee, could you share with the, with what you and I talked about, about that Hawkins County Schools is making history in years?
Yes, um, I, there are currently twenty-five states, uh, in the country that do a four day, uh, school week. Um, and like I said, over five hundred districts, but we would be the first school in, a public school in Tennessee, uh, to do this. So we are, we are making this great little school on the mountain, uh, K twelve school and, um, I think it will be a great way to kind of track data and see, you know, what costs, uh, on field. You can say, I, I know it's different group of school site, but there are things that we can try to see, you know, what the difference in, uh, fuel costs and, uh, earths and, you know, milk and things like that with that one day. Um, we're not going to school, but yes, we, we will be the first school in the state of Tennessee to go to a, a four day school week, so. Thank you. It will make history.
So, Chair, can you, can you read back the motion till we have it clear in our minds?
That the amendment is, Clinch School will go to a four day week and with the Thursday, September eighth, beginning to three forty-five p.m., beginning September ninth, to the end of the first semester.
Right. That seems to be it, okay. The motion was made and seconded, I, I believe. Any further questions or debate? All right, let's call the roll, please.
Trent?
Yes.
Shad?
Yes.
Marken?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Thank you.
You still gotta vote on the original motion.
I just say thank you for your support. We really, I, I know the staff really appreciate it.
Was it possible that we put those two together?
No. If you make an amendment, you gotta vote on the amendment. And you can't put them together, the amendment and the motion go together. Also, the first motion is withdrawn.
I would get all the first motion, my favorite.
Thank you. All right. Put it in good hands?
Do you wanna leave anything on the table?
We should, okay. Okay, uh, item B is Hawkins County Schools' new logo pilot list.
Very, uh, very excited. Uh, we have, we have many, many, uh, drafts turned in from our students. Great participation. I want to thank the teachers, uh, specifically the art teachers and, and others that encouraged student for. others that encouraged student participation. Um, we did send these out visually and we asked the board to narrow it down to the top two, and if we can come to agreement on the top two, we will have students and their, uh, and their instructors clean up those, those logo designs and bring them back for final vote, potentially on one, uh, back in October, in, in October.
Okay, how do you want to handle that tonight as far as trying to develop the top two?
We have, we have, uh, top, we have top two, uh, with the exception that we did not get votes from, we did not get votes from Jackie, which is going right now, and Kathy. Okay.
You just said you won.
Wait, 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 how do we get a motion?
How is it going?
Pick your own.
That's mine, right there. That's mine, I don't know, yes, that's my first one, and I think. Let me choose that other one, that's my second one. I did like it, I did.
What number is that?
Fourteen. Fourteen. Hold it up again.
Michelle, would you, would you be, uh, willing if we could take the, the names off and protect some, some privacy to maybe post the, if we scanned them? Could, could we post those in some manner so we could recognize the students that did turn in, the ones that are being posted?
Yes, so we, uh, we will scan and post the, uh, post ones that were submitted to us along with, we will, um, we will reach out to the two finalists.
Okay.
And we have some prizes for the two, the two finalists, and, uh, and we'll post, post that information, their names as being, uh, finalists.
Perfect. So, so we are going to recognize everybody that did submit a, a proposal for this?
And I just want to say that, um, that the students were, uh, very creative in, in what they submitted, and the ideas that these, these, uh, drawings represent, those are the ideas of how they feel about our community, what our community represents, our history, and, um, and where we're going to go in the future. And they also wrote, um, about why they, why they made the designs the way they did. And so, um, I commend all of them for the, the work, and I look forward to seeing, uh, the two finalists.
It was, it was pretty amazing not only to see the artwork, but to see the explanations of why they focused on it.
Yeah, I was impressed with that. Very talented young people. All right, that brings us up to, um, I see is train energy and operation cost analysis. Is that kind of, Mr. Fisher, is that going hand-in-hand with, uh, Mr. Glass's presentation to us perhaps next month on the?
This is, this is different. This is, uh, this is specifically train coming in and providing an operational cost analysis in, in alignment with a major, uh, overhaul of a HVAC system at both of our comprehensive high schools. Um, so they have to do that study if we are going to entertain the idea of them potentially doing that big, uh, project or project force in the future, which is, uh, is, is probably close to a one-point-five million dollar total job. But in order to do that and to bid that out, they have to do an operational cost analysis, which would be free to us if we proceed forward with, uh, the recommendations. My recommendation is that we take them up on that because we can use that study as part of our operational cost analysis that I spoke about that would come back in January as part of our overall cost analysis for the decision.
But this would not be made for the two finalists, though, right?
It, it, well, it's a number of projects, but it's specifically for those two big, uh, looming projects over our head, because, uh, if, if you remember, uh, when we talked about those, those, that project list, those HVAC systems are composed of very, very old ducting and old systems, specifically the roof mounting, uh, systems, and they are very costly to get into because you're looking at structures on the inside of the schools being changed as well.
You said something to caught my ear, you said that it was at no cost, if we went with it, if we don't go with it, what is our cost?
There is a, there is a, there is a cost to that, and it is, uh, it is estimated per the square footage of, of the school site studied in that cost analysis. Um, so I'm going to, if you want to discuss it, I'll bring Brandon up as soon as we're done with, with, uh, item B, if we could go back and finalize item B, and then I can bring Brandon up to answer any questions you may have on item C, if, if you would like that. Yeah, it's, it's on the tack, it's on the, it's on the sheet in there.
Hundred thirty-five thousand dollars.
If, if we don't take a look on the recommendation, and remember that that entire cost is offset by our lighting project, um, and the savings are roughly around a thousand dollars a year we were incurring in electrical savings by shifting to LED lights system-wide, and that savings would then pay for those, uh, for those major projects that are looming over our head, and we'd have to come up with the money somehow. So it kills two birds with one stone, so to speak, and I like birds, but, um, but any, anytime we could double dip and, and cross two, two bridges at the same time, I think we ought to look at those options. One is, we get that cost analysis done, number two, we incur, or we use the savings from our lighting project that we had studied a couple months ago to offset and pay completely for the, uh, large-scale HVAC projects that train is going to come in and fight out for us.
As a matter of business, did we not finish up on item B? I thought we tallied, or you were going to tally the top two finalists.
So number one and number fourteen are the top two. This is number one. Number one is the mountain with the book at the bottom.
Oh, that was too fast.
Sorry. That's number one. And fourteen?
Oh, that was Mr. Christian's choice.
So we will bring those back after we send them back to the students, correct, Michelle, and have them cleaned up and finalized, ready for print.
Very well. Did I take care of that?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. All right, uh, going back to I C on the train energy and operation cost analysis, I would assume that we need to proceed on that?
Yes, because there is an incurred cost if we do not go with the recommendations afterwards, so, and because it's an incurred cost or potential of an incurred cost, I would, I would recommend we have board, board approval to move forward.
All right, here's a recommendation being made by the director. Is there a motion to approve the train energy and operation cost analysis? Motion's been made by Ms. Shaden, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Ms. Charles, further discussion, questions?
We do have Brandon, our energy manager here, who's worked, uh, with Train and, and showed Shannon, but I think that Brandon drew the speech in, if there are questions.
Friends, anything you want to add to what Mr. Hickson said?
He comes in pretty well. Do you have any specific questions on that?
Any questions?
Now, I understood this is, it will be covered, like, by the savings of the LED lights.
So, so there's, there's two incurred, there's two, there's two, um, potential incurred costs. Number one is this, the, the detailed school site by school site, building by building analysis that Train will perform. That does come with the cost if we don't go with their recommendations, uh, to upgrade our system. Number two, there's an incurred cost if, uh, if we go down the road of not doing the lighting upgrade and funding this out of our general operations funds. Uh, however, if we decide to go with this, and I, my recommendation would be if the cost falls into line, would be to do the lighting project and use that savings to completely offset the study and the HVAC upgrades that they were recommending.
Let me just ask this question. I know that Beeson Lusk, our architect firm, had done a similar study, school by school, for a sister district in our region. Very comprehensive, and I did look at the reports and, uh, in the fine school, I, I would, and you can think some of this very information talking about tonight. I wouldn't imagine that they paid a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for that study.
It is, it is, uh, Train, their work on the study does fall within the, within the, uh, the state match as far as what their, the scope of work that they're doing, so it does not have to be bid, but, um, we could entertain others coming up to do so. The nice thing about Train doing it is it's completely free if we move forward with them because we will use that energy offset to pay for those two large, large projects, specifically at high school, and, and at the, at both high schools. Those systems are, uh, very antiquated, ready to go down, there's already problems with some of the ancillary HVAC systems at both school sites. Uh, we've replaced a number of the units on the ground, but we do not, we cannot source that in-house to do that, that scope of work that's required in both of those school sites because of the roof mounting and the, and the ductwork.
If we were to ask you to contact Beeson Lusk Architects over a, uh, estimate on some of the analysis, would you be in a position to do that and bring that back to the board at some point? And I'm just asking quick.
I would have to see that to say.
It, we'll have to use a different one, Beeson Lusk, and Christian Lusk, and Beeson Lusk, too.
Are they out?
Yes, Tony sold out.
Oh, really?
Well, there's, there's somebody up there.
Somebody buy them out that's maintaining the business, or are they just?
Yeah, still, well, they're just having an office door, so they'll do.
Okay. Well, we've got a motion and a, uh, second on the floor, and it's ready for vote, if there's no further comments, but?
If you would like to table it, we can table it, and I can move forward with, um, working with staff to get it out of bid on the.
Barter for all of the motion, I would imagine. All right, the person making the motion is asking that it be withdrawn. Uh, with that being said, does anyone have any objections to Mr. Hickson further exploring this with the help of staff to see other opportunities? We have information here that we have brought Mr. Hickson on the report that was done in the other system, so, and it's extremely comprehensive, and he'll take you weeks to read, so. All right, so let's table this till next, till next month, for the report. All right. Any other new business that anyone has before we move into election of officers for 2019 and 20? I'm not aware of anything. Hearing none without objection, uh, for this purpose, uh, I will, I will act as your chairman up to the point of election of a chairman. I think it's required that we elect a chairman first, and then a vice chair, and then a chairman pro temp, and then a Tennessee, uh, legislative network person. So, um, the format we can follow is the same one we followed in the past, is that nominations would come from the floor, and then votes would be cast in that order as they come in. Any questions about the process for voting on and nominating chair? It's a simple majority, it's not two-thirds or anything like that, it's a simple majority in this case, uh, takes four votes, uh, the elected chair. No questions being heard, and the floor is open for nominations for chair. I'll be the first one, go ahead and make the motion that, that Chris Christian will be nominated for chair for nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
I'll say it.
Mootions don't have to be seconded, but thank you.
I'd like to do that.
That's an affirmation. All right, is there any other motions coming to the floor for chair? Any other nominations? What did I say, motion? Yeah, you said. Nominations come before. Hearing none, nomination cease. Uh, you'll call the, call the roll, Mr. Christian's chair.
Trent.
Yes.
Shaden.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Pete.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Charles.
Everything.
My first order of business is you go ahead and continue till we adjourn.
Yeah, he can't be a general listening over. All right, uh, the next item for nomination is vice chair. Floor is open for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Debbie Shaden today.
Nomination for Debbie Shaden. Debbie Shaden is vice chair, other nominations. Hearing no more of the nominations, Debbie Shaden is nominated for vice chair. If you call the roll, please.
Charles.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Pete.
Stan.
Martin.
Yes.
Shaden. Yes. Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Debbie Shaden, vice chair. Chairman pro temp, that would be in the absence of your chairman and your vice chair to sit in and chair the meetings. Uh, we will take nominations for chairman pro temp.
I'd like to nominate Bob Martins for chairman pro temp.
Nomination for Bob Martins for chairman pro temp. Other nominations? Hearing none, nomination cease, call the roll, please.
Trent.
Yes.
Shaden.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Pete.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll present you as chairman pro temp. The last item for approval is a nomination is our Tennessee Legislative Network person that will communicate and bring us data back, and also communicate a wish lecture. Uh, last year was Ms. Shaden, and the floor is open for nominations of that position.
Jackie Chor.
They bless your heart, I'll be fine. Yeah, we all know they did shit.
You were too quick, you were aggressive.
You declined?
Didn't you hear? Before I finished my sentence, she declined.
Are you serious?
Thank you. Other nominations for Tennessee Legislative Network, board member. Hearing no more nominations? Nomination cease, call the roll, please.
Charles.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Pete.
Stan.
Martin.
Yes.
Shaden.
Yes.
Trent.
Thank you. That is our new, uh, chairman and vice chair and chairman pro temp and our legislative network person. Thank you all, I've enjoyed my time as your chair, and thank you for all your participation and cooperation on the floor, Mr. Christian, his leadership.
The founder of the Polytric Meeting September sixteenth at Tom's High School in the city in Florida.
September sixteenth, Polytric Meeting, Santi High School. And anybody who wants to ride together, get your federal board members. Four thirty. Nothing's different than playing fifteen, if you haven't already. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All those who like to repair it, please stand.